Hello, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your patience. We just came from dinner presentation with our township officials from West Windsor and Plainsboro. So I believe some of them are still here to hear all again. And now I can officially call this meeting to order. In accordance with the state's sunshine law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and, to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting on January 10, 2025, and April 25, 2025, to the Home News Tribune and The Times, posted on the district website, placed in the board office and in each of the district schools, and sent to Plainsboro and West Windsor Public Libraries and Plainsboro and West Windsor Township clerks. So now, without further ado, I'd like to call on Dr. Aderhold for our public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay, everyone, I want to do a quick roll call. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Bonsell. Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho. Ms. Krug.
Present.
Ms. Maliga.
Here.
Ms. Shetty.
Here.
Ms. Zovich.
Present.
Ms. McEwen.
Here.
Oh, Ms. Shaw, sorry about that. My sheet was not updated. I apologize.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we come forward this evening with our annual hearing on the district's budget for the 25-26 school year. My name's Dave Aderhold, the superintendent, and it's my pleasure and opportunity to present this year's budget. From a process perspective, the budget build starts as early as May of last year, as we work through a series of meetings and discussions with our budget managers, looking at our instructional programs, looking at our fixed costs, the cyclical costs around topics such as insurance, contractual costs, custodial services, our negotiated contracts, our healthcare insurance, essentially, a lot of costs that get factored outside of the instructional program and opportunities for students. We are a people business. The vast majority of our budget sits in salaries and benefits, so we have to be mindful of that. So as I start this year's presentation, I just want to send my thanks and appreciation to our budget managers, to our business office under the leadership of Dr. Russo, to our finance committee, and to our members of our Board of Education, members of central office, for all the work that they've done. When I say central office, I'm not just talking about the administrative team, but the whole back end of the organization. People forget that we're a quarter of a billion-dollar organization, and that we have a payroll department, a payable department, a healthcare and benefits team, individuals that work each and every day to make sure that the operations in the schools operate in a way in which they should. We have a building and grounds department, transportation department. So a lot of individuals that make this district operate that are sort of behind the scenes, that aren't noted, that are budget managers that help make this operation run. We always start each year with our mission statement, and our district mission is to make sure that we're empowering all learners to thoughtfully contribute to a diverse and changing world with confidence, strength, strength of character, and a love of learning. And our mission statement, and our mission, and our vision, and our values, and our strategic goals should be seen in our budget. And if you haven't seen the March 18 meeting where we talked about that, you know, I would encourage folks to look back and really look at some of the topics that we talked about in the state of the world right now, and how that we're bringing these strategic goals to life, and how we've taken a stand as a community supporting the work with our statement on diversity, equity, inclusivity, and the work that's occurring in our district and each of our buildings. Now, it's important, just for those that are watching for the first time, and for members of the audience that are here, I'm just going to sort of go through some high-level talking points with respect to what's a school budget, and talk through some of just the things that we have to be mindful of and thinking about as we build our budget. A budget is a planning tool, so things may shift in a year, enrollment may shift, but it's a planning tool to get us into the next school year. We must consider contingencies, so we don't have a line of credit, we do not have a credit card, we have to make everything work within the fiscal budget that gets adopted this evening. So we also have to manage risk and think about our programs that way. We have to be fiscally responsible to members of our community, and we need to make sure that our budget is a reflection of our values. And if we really believe in empowering our students to be lifelong learners with confidence and strength of character and love of learning, then we need to make sure that we're building things into the budget that reflect our values. And of course, we have to look at buffers and safeguards. And there's some pretty good examples out there right now about like what's happening when a district does not have enough money to get to the end of a fiscal year, right, and the request to the state to try to borrow, or the request to cancellation of services, or considering elimination of all this or all of that, or looking at class sizes. And this is things that my colleagues and boards of education around the state of New Jersey are contemplating in live time right now, as the fiscal challenges for the state and individual districts is at its all-time height right now in the state of New Jersey. So our school budget, at the end of the day, is a theory about priorities for our students, and what we want for our students, our goals for them and for their future. So as we think about building the budget, we have to frame it through the lens of what do we want for our students. And the reality, though, is that as much as we want that for our kids, we have to be mindful of the dollar, the dollar that we have available to us, and the decisions have to be made in a way that we're contemplating the finances. And we have several rules in place that are set forward by the state of New Jersey about how monies can increase year to year on the general fund tax levy. And so our board has to follow really two major rules. One is that our revenues must be within cap or cap-plus allowances, and there's a couple allowances that let us go above 2%, and I'll talk about that, and that our revenues must equal our expenses. So with that, we should be really proud of our district. Our finance office over the last 16 years, with the leadership of the finance committee and members of the Board of Education, have received the certificate of excellence by ASBO International over the last 16 consecutive years, and the meritorious budget for the last eight years. And I often say that the only reason it's eight consecutive years is because we started applying eight years ago, or it would be longer, right? So and then where does the money come from? The money comes through various revenue streams. The main source in West Windsor-Plainsboro is the local taxes from our community members. They pay state taxes as well, so really, the state aid is coming back to the community. And we send out more than we get back as a community. That's true for federal aid as well. Federal aid is something that I'm going to speak to, because there's some real concerns about the cash flow around what's going to happen with federal dollars with the state of the state of public education and the way in which the current administration is talking about funding public education. There are federal grants as well, and we're seeing concerns about will the federal grants be funded as well. The district does get some interest on some of our accounts, like any individual that has a bank account that might get a very small interest rate. Well, we do too. And so we have some very small interest that comes in. We do have very small amount of tuition that we can bring in. Sometimes we have specialty programs, and we might get a student for a program or not when other districts try to contract with us to send a student in. That happens infrequently, but it occasionally happens. We don't take tuition students that parents can pay, but occasionally, like in special education, if you have a program for students with multiple disabilities, you may have a district that needs to find a placement, and they're supposed to go to local districts as one of the options. And so we may get a tuition student that way. And then budgeted surplus and reserve withdrawals. It's just the ins and outs of what happens with cash flow when there's a surplus. When we come to point and points on revenue, it's really important to remember that while our costs can change in a year, the amount of money that we're bringing in often doesn't. There's some anomaly years, like ESAR money during COVID, right? So there's some nuance to this, but that usually requires an injection of funding due to a crisis. Maybe the federal government has come forward with ARAMoney about a decade, 12 years ago, 15 years ago, and then ESAR money three, four years ago now. But we can't ask for more money to the taxpayers. If our expenses go up, we can't go back to the township committees and councils and say, hey, guess what, you know, our costs just went up an extra $2 million, so go back to the taxpayers. What gets adopted this evening is the budget. And then all of 25-26 is based on the monies that come in right now. So if all of a sudden our December 25 healthcare increase for January 26, all of a sudden goes up by $3 million starting in January, we have to figure out how to make the rest of the year budget with that increase based on what we have today, or what we have after you vote. The law in New Jersey talks about a local tax increase of 2% on the general fund. The 2% on the general fund is on the local district share of the budget, not the totality of the budget. So for us, that's about 93, 95%. In addition to that, there's something called an SGLA. It's a spending growth limitation adjustment. The spending growth limitation adjustment is based on the concept that for certain budget categories, and there's four, but really only two apply to schools right now. One is enrollment. Enrollment would have to go up more than 10% in one year, so we would have to gain about 900 students from last year to this year in one shot on the October 15 enrollment. So that's not going to happen. And the second category is on healthcare, and that's where most districts are generating a growth limitation adjustment, because unfortunately, in the category of healthcare, we've seen exorbitant cost increases over the last five years, seven years, from pre-COVID through. Our current healthcare increase for next year is $4.7 million. Our 2% is 3.6. So healthcare alone is 1.1 million more than our ability to raise the general fund. So we don't use the healthcare SGLA. We would then actually have to cut services for students by $1 million before we look at any other salary increase, special education tuition increase, transportation increase, insurance increase, energy increase, anything else. So you get the sense that healthcare alone is severely hurting West Windsor-Plainsboro, but it's hurting every district across New Jersey. And there's been questions like, have districts made changes to try to cap costs? I'll speak about that in a subsequent slide, because this will be our third change to healthcare over six school years in order to cap and change and control costs. Now, the district does have some additional tax authority to collect debt service, and that's around the construction. So we have passed referendums in the past, and when you collect debt, you're allowed to collect, when the community has voted to approve a referendum, you can then collect that debt above and beyond the 2% and above and beyond the SGLA. In WWP, our debt is paid for the referendum out of general fund and out of capital reserve. So we don't collect the debt for the referendum. It's already collected essentially within the budget and within reserve accounts that are monies that the community has already paid that then gets put in reserve, that gets spent to help control this cost. We have the legal authority to collect about another $12 million in addition to what we're asking. And obviously, that would be devastating to the community, and it goes against what we talked about during the referendum and all that kind of work. So we're not making that recommendation. Where's the money go? It goes to a lot of places. The big drivers, salary and benefits, healthcare, utility, repair, maintenance, professional services. We have services like building and grounds, our food service programs, our transportation vendors, a lot of vendors that we work with, professional services for architectural service, engineering services, whatnot, special education costs and support services. We have vendors that we work with for services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, BCBA, board-certified behavior analyst. Then we get to spend a little bit of money on supplies, textbooks, and materials, and capital projects. The money that's remaining, the 1% to 2%, is things that go direct services for students. It might be athletic programs, like the increased cricket program that North just kicked off against Monroe today, right? It's things like that that we actually have direct services and opportunities for students, our clubs and activities, things that actually are the heartbeat of the district. So within budget considerations, there's not a lot here. I mean, in each of these three positions that we're asking to build within this budget are all offsets of other costs and are actually all cost savings. We're asking for an increase in a board-certified behavior analyst. Right now, the district contracts for these services, we already have five on staff, four in special services, one in general education. So building this one in, we're currently paying upwards of $1,000 a day for BCBA support services. Obviously, bringing a staff member in-house is cheaper. Speech therapist services, we don't have enough speech therapists to service all the needs that students have within their IEP. And when that happens, whether someone goes out on leave or whether the services have increased, we have a responsibility to provide those services, so we contract out for those services. And then we have a growth teacher, one growth teacher, and that's over at our post-grad program, that's our 18- to 21-year-olds. Over at 72 Grover's Mill, that's the Montessori property to the left of High School North, across from Millstone River. At that particular property, we'll have 12 to 14 additional students graduating from North or exiting from North to go over there. We're still required to keep a class-size ratio, so we'll have more students going over than we'll have teachers' availability, and each student will be over 70,000 out of district for services. So 700,000 plus to one teacher's salary, it's a good deal. So we'll be, each one of these is a cost savings. At the end of the day, a cost savings over what we would be paying for outside services. Special education tuition, this is just a point of contention within public education for public school districts to outside companies that have outside tuition. They're increasing often 10-plus percent year to year versus what we, we can't control that. They're not capped, we are. On the curriculum instruction side, it's just some of the instructional programming that we're maintaining. These aren't growth programs. It's tech platforms. It's our Orning-Gillingham training. It's our dual-language immersion training. It's our multi-tiered systems of support and our intervention model. It's our strategic goals and supporting that work, and it's work like responsive classroom, ensuring that we're training our classroom teachers. On the healthcare side, we talked about some of the complications in healthcare. January 1, we moved from being self-insured to being in a shift, a school health insurance fund. That was January 1 of 2025. We stayed within ETNA. No, yes, we stayed. Sorry. I switch health plans to my wife, so I'm getting confused for a second. So we stayed within ETNA, but we switched on the prescription side. But within that, those moves have to be made because some of these long-term inflationary costs that we're seeing in our self-funding that we had been in, we were doing really well and staying below the state averages. But this past year, we had two catastrophic claims. Those catastrophic claims were over $1 million each. One was a heart transplant. One was over 50 days approximately in the hospital before the individual unfortunately passed. Those claims themselves had tremendous amount of treatment to them, 1.5 and 1.2 million. As a result of that, we were told our increase would have been 30-plus percent. So we were looking at like three times the 4.7. So by going out, working with our carrier for our broker for health insurance, and putting our essentially portfolio of belly buttons, is the actual term in the industry, because how many belly buttons you provide health insurance to, and putting that on sort of bid to these vendors, we were able to get a 10.6% increase by going to the shift. But it's scary times in health insurance. In transportation, route renewals were at 3.57. This is down from the year before at 5.61, and the year before at over 6. But we've seen some stabilization in transportation costs, but for several years in a row, these were growing at an astronomical rate. On the capital project side, there are a litany of projects. The two big ones are the roof replacement at Town Center is over 3.5, and the purchase of the Pathways property next to High School North, called the High School North Annex. That's over 3.5. Those two properties, those two drive about $7 million of cost. The Town Center roof project will not be done unless we get a rod grant. A rod grant's called a regular operating district grant. We had submitted for it. We're in conversation with the state. This could take time, but if you don't have it budgeted, you can't build it when the money comes through. So we, this is the third year in a row that we're allocating this money. The money's not spent. It goes back into capital reserves to be spent in a subsequent year. The High School North Annex, same thing. The board has the opportunity to purchase that property in year four of the lease or year five of the lease. This coming up year 25-26 is year four, so we can make a decision to purchase that property. But if we don't have it budgeted, then you have to take additional actions down the road. So we budgeted those $2 in. Everything else, then, is like some work around the district that needs upgrades or additional projects. The HVAC upgrade at Dutchneck alone is $900,000. It's one unit, one rooftop unit, $900,000. It's the original wing of Dutchneck. That unit has been failing for, off and on for 15 years. I was here when that project went in 15 years ago as a first-year assistant soup. So the reality is, you know, those things all have lifespans, 15 to 30 years. That particular, that vendor went out of business, and we were in litigation with them at one point. So we've struggled with that unit all the way through. Budget parameters, these are just some of the big drivers in the year budget. The three big ones you can see are healthcare, and that reflects the 4.7. Salary, we have a lot of people. We have just around 1,500 people when you add all substitutes in. We have about 11, 50 to 1,200 staff members that are working all the time in our district, whether as teachers or bus drivers, instructional aides, or administrators, or cafeteria aides or whatnot, working in multiple associations or not affiliate. There's also our tech department, and there's just a lot of folks that make this district run. So they're all entitled to increases in salary, and that's 2.7 million, based on the snapshot of a fixed period in time to a fixed period of time, right? So you look at usually approximately December 15 snapshot, and you have to run the budget based on a snapshot and build the budget based on that with all the scattergrams and salary guides, and then that's your salary costs. And then administration is actually not administrators. It's administration, custodial services, PERS is pension, FICA is state insurance. Insurance is more like the money that we pay to ensure the district with respect to like workers' comp and other claims that you might get, like liability insurance, thank you, Chris, other things that may be cyber insurance, things like that. The unknowns, every year, prescription and healthcare is on the line, because every year we renew on the mid-year, on the end of the calendar year, but we operate on a July 1 to June year. So our renewals are based on two moments in the annual year. So we won't know the January 1, '26 through June 30, '26 increase until like November, right? So we have to then, when we talk about budgeting for contingencies, that's the kind of thing that we're talking about. We don't know the increase. We're currently out to bid for building and grounds. We're going through interviews right now. We had to build in our projected budget before we got the bids. So you have to build contingencies into your budget to try to say like, what would happen if the bid comes in a million more than you budgeted, right? We can't come back to you even right now and change this. So we have to make it work within. And then the big unknown is the uncertainty about what's happening at the federal level with the USDOE and Congress and the executive branch with respect to federal aid for public schools. And there is a lot of question about what this means for us, and there are pretty good examples of states and districts that are being threatened in lifetime with the loss of federal dollars for a variety of compliance-based issues based on the current federal government's interpretation of Title VI, Title IX, their executive orders, their dear colleague letters, and other things. For a little bit more context to that, the last, the March 18 board meeting has more context, but just this past Friday, the Attorney General for New Jersey, Matt Plackin, engaged in a lawsuit against the current administration with 18 other states around the threat to school districts around the nation, around withholding federal aid. So built within this budget, there is some contingency to protect the district for potential loss of title grants. That's Title I, II, III, IV, protecting the district and ultimately protecting the students for the maintaining of services for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the IDEA. We have already been told a 90% cut in Medicaid. All school districts were cut 90%, and this is for services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech. And NSLP is the National School Lunch Program. And as I said in that March 18 meeting, if you don't think they'll take food from students, all you have to do is look at the reduction in grants for farmers and the reduction in direct aid for food programs for our most vulnerable populations around the nation, including direct food and supplies to food banks that impact even WWP, because Set Hunger Packing, which provides over 100 weekend bridge meals for students and families in need in our community, will be impacted by some of the local food banks that they work with, getting reductions in federal support. When we talk about federal money, what we're talking about is just under $3 million. Title grants, there's four buckets of them, but at the end of the day, it's money for kids that are having struggles in their learning journey, and PD for staff to help support those students in those struggles with their learning journey, right? So PD being professional development. IDEA is tuition and support for students with disabilities, students that have IEPs with designated needs, and this pays for, helps pay for tuition and for staffing. And again, National School Lunch Program is literally the, we participate in a regulated national food program that helps control costs, but that makes sure that students that receive free and reduced lunch services that qualify based on family income eligibility receive food. If the National School Lunch Program was to go away or to stop being funded, we could exit that program to cover those dollars, but that would then have an increased cost to every family to make sure that we were covering our costs for food, but then also supporting the students that would have qualified for free and reduced lunch. So this is not a today thing. This is a, you know, what would happen if question that we have to think about as we move forward around those dollars. And then, of course, I mentioned Medicaid is above and beyond the 3 million or the 2.9, and that's the 90% reduction that we were told. And that translates to about $135,000 reduction in projected income. We're at 147 right now. We were told to expect $12,000. Our budget story is one of inflation, but our story is no different than other districts. And so these all, all these categories match up to budget lines in prior budgets. So we took a year snapshot from pre-COVID in 1819, and then went to our COVID year, and then you can sort of see the exponential increase in something like transportation. That's gone from 10 million, 10.7 to now 17 million over six school years, right? We're starting seeing our healthcare go from 25 million to 37 and change. We see more control around special education instructional costs, but that's because we're building more programs in-house. That's keeping students in. When I arrived in district in 2009, 2010, I oversaw special services, and we were sending over 130 students out per year. Because we've built programs methodically over time, we're now sending out approximately 80 students per year to out-of-district placements. And those are, if a student's going out, we do not have a program built for them, or we don't have a room available. We have worked diligently to build spaces and to hire staff to control our out-of-district costs as best as we could to try to maintain programs in-house. And you can see there's a whole bunch of years which we had a lot of sort of relatively flat growth in the middle there from '21 to '25. Some of the increase in the '25-26 is because we're hedging with budgeting some additional dollars to protect ourselves if we lose IDEA. And then, of course, you can see just the state of contracted percentage is just that, especially in a post-COVID world, there were some shifts in the way in which employees were compensated. um, there were some shifts in the way in which employees were compensated. Um, and then, um, insurance increases. There's been, insurance, you know, you're, you're in a pool. So it's important just to remember that, you know, if there's a flood in North Carolina or there's a hurricane that hits Florida or Texas, the pool could still be hit. Forest fires in California can hit the pool. No different than flooding on the Jersey coast or up one of our riverways can impact, can impact other states. So insurance can be localized with respect to like a cyber insurance. Um, but you can get into these pools where, you know, where we have unemployment insurance, we have liability insurances. Um, and then we have, you know, catastrophic insurances, um, for certain claims. So. And then now technology is just, it's not, it's not like in a, in a pre-one-to-one device day and age. You know, you have fixed costs, replacement costs for devices, but all the hardware from the switches to the blades to, you know, all the different hotspots that you see. Each hotspot's about a thousand dollars that you see. You know, that projector's twenty-five thousand dollars. All of it has a cost. So, and they all have replacement cycles, like that's going soon, right? You can see the, the bulb light is damaged, hard to see in the numbers, right? It's not, we're gonna, you're gonna have replacement costs on all this, all this stuff. This just shows a snapshot of our budget and some of the fund balances over time and how, how this works. But you can see that we're recommending a total, total tax levy increase of five point two-two-three, which is sizably different than, uh, prior years. Three point nine-nine-eight is included within that is just to go budget to budget, year to year. One point two-two-five is the additional dollars that we've built in, um, to, to protect the district around whatever could happen with the federal government. Um, so as other districts have to reduce services, decrease, increase class sizes, we can maintain programs should a catastrophic federal, uh, change come at us or should we have a cash flow issue? It, it might be that we prevail in court or a state prevails in court, but we could have months of a cash flow hold where we need to provide programs for students. So we're, we're hedging, um, and we're protecting the district, protecting our student programs. And again, I go back to what's the money for? Struggling learners, teacher salaries, um, and then ultimately tuition costs for students that have legally binding contracts between parents and IEP teams and ultimately the district to provide those services that have to be provided no matter what happens with federal cash flow. So what ends up happening is we would have to shift funds to support all that and it would have a residual impact on reductions of teachers and class sizes in other areas. No one wants any of that. So we're, we've recommended building in one point two-two-five of the five point two-two-three to be essentially a fund to protect the district should we lose federal aid. If federal aid may, is maintained and the district isn't, the board will be able to make a determination about that money in a subsequent budget. And then ultimately any breakage that's used, that's not used out of those lines would go back to the taxpayers in unspent funds. So the board would have to make decisions about those dollars in a one-time capacity and in a future budget. There is some tax, our, our tax, uh, split is based on enrollment. So there's some slight enrollment shifts. And, you know, half percent actually does shift the budget, you know, it, it impacts the townships, um, in a tune of about a hundred dollars. So when you start seeing shifts in population, um, and while West Windsor has all the growth coming with respect to, like you drive around the community and see everything being built, the kids actually have, we've had a, about a hundred and thirteen student decrease in West Windsor year over year um, as the new residences have, are just starting to open. As in like, during this school year, I think the new towns property down the road by the mosque has fifteen, um, permits that just were granted. So as these, as these families are just starting to move in, the enrollment will follow. Um, and so in a future year, we would expect that we'll start seeing some enrollment switches going forward, but it's going to depend on how the housing opens up over time. Now, this particular slide can be misleading. Um, and it comes from the Taxpayers Guide to Education Spending. And this is a DO, it's on the DOE website. The last year that comes out is the twenty-two, twenty-three year. So that's the last, uh, year that's been released. And it's really important to note that there's three huge budget categories that are not inside this. One is special education, two is transportation, three is pension. And I say that because in order to go comparable district to district, you have to then look at like budget categories. And there's districts out there like Nutley as an example, that if Nutley was going to be compared against Montclair, um, just to take it out of Mercer County, Nutley has no district busing. Everyone's a walker. So you can't compare those numbers. So they just take those big categories out. And then that's sort of the remaining. So this isn't an all-in cost. This is in the big like-budget category cost. And New Jersey, uh, we're below New Jersey. We're below our, our local peers. So, um, you know, in years gone by, they would have said we have an above-average product for a below-average price. And that used to land when there was a different board president. That's now a mayor. That's here. Although he doesn't like to hear it as much as now. Uh, allocation of revenues. Is he in the audience? He's not. All right. So when we, when we have revenues, uh, we've talked about our two percent. We talked about the bank cap categories. Bank cap works like this. You have the year of. So for us, we have the twenty-five, twenty-six. That's what we can generate based on the dumpster fire that is the cost of healthcare in the state of New Jersey. And then you have two subsequent years that you can quote-unquote bank. So if you don't spend your SGLA, your spending growth limitation adjustment, you have two future budget years to spend. And this year, we need to take all three budget categories, all three of the SGLAs to raise nine point seven million minus the decrease in state aid that we're receiving. So we did not increase, we decreased in state aid by three percent of just under half a million. Then we had the Medicaid reimbursement reduction of ninety percent. So our total revenue increase of nine point one and change. How that's applied across those categories, again, and we're doing this purposely breaking out because after the last two meetings ago, there was some confusion that it was five point two-two-three plus two percent. No, it's the two percent is within the five point two-two-three. So we wanted to make it really clear that it's two percent plus the one point nine-nine-eight, which is the SGLA that's generated from twenty-five, twenty-six, which is at three-seven-three-four, right? So there's the number three-seven-three-four. And then adding in the two other, the one point eight, oh, sorry, one point four and the eight hundred is two point two and change, right? And that is the funds that we're building in at one point two-two-five to sort of protect our programs. Again, our most vulnerable student populations and the services for those student populations to ensure that whatever mess happens at the federal level. And, and for those of the, that are not paying attention to what's happening, you have to just look at what happens, it's happening in Maine right now. They've been told they risk all federal funds and there's litigation going on between the state of Maine and the federal government. Our attorney general and eighteen others just sued on Friday about threatening districts on loss of federal funding. If we don't do this and it happens in two months, we can't go back to the taxpayers, right? We don't, remember, we can't go back. We can ask for approve and then not spend and then give back through tax relief in the subsequent year or move it into reserve funds or it becomes the, part of the increase for next year is buried within the two-two-eight. But this may be a multi-year issue with the federal government. So it might just be the allotment to protect federal funding for several years until this gets fixed. This is going to go through the courts most likely. And, and as I've shared in other settings, and, and I'm, I don't believe I'm a conspiracy theorist on this. It's important to recognize that New Jersey is one of two states with a governor's election. So in coming into the next election year. So if you really want to look at where can this play out in the national conversation, New Jersey, a historically blue state that shifted to be a purple state in the last election, that public education is a dear, uh, sacred cow of, that has an attorney general and a governor suing the president with a very much contested governor election. So if, if it plays out anywhere, New Jersey is one of the states where I think it's not inappropriate to say, it's possible that this federal conversation starts playing out right here in New Jersey. And if, if I'm, if I'm correct in that, it's fiscally responsible and prudent to protect our students by taking this additional tax authority. Because at the end of the day, it's protecting the programs that we offer for students with disabilities that receive services that are legally binding and students that, that receive services through tutoring, support programs and grants, and then the staffing that's associated with all those programs. This is a lot, and I'll just point out one or two things here. Top left, there's tax levy, SGLA, healthcare, bank cap, and then total tax levy. That's the local funds. So it's important to go across that total tax levy line. You see the hundred and eighty-eight million, then the one ninety-eight, and then it goes to five point two-two. The five point two-two, and if we go one more number, five point two-two-three is the impact on the local tax levy. Then you can see across the state aid, that's the reduction I spoke about on a prior slide, the four-eighty-four, that's the three percent. The guardrails that the governor and the commissioner of education built in, no, no more than a three percent reduction, no more than a six percent increase. SEMI I talked about being a ninety percent reduction. Then the ins and outs of capital reserve dollars that are referenced when I talked about capital projects. Then you have all those local funds and sources around grants and entitlements. And again, because we're, we have to budget less, you can see federal sources. We were told to budget at sixty-five percent of our federal budget over last year. Usually it's eighty-five percent. This year we were told to budget at sixty-five percent. Just like they're budgeting SEMI at ninety percent, a loss of ninety percent. They're only budgeting SEMI at ten percent. And then let's go to the ins and outs of transfers, uh, with respect to ins for capital reserve, out to debt service, back to budgeted fund balance. So there's ins and outs of money there and it gets confusing. But the end of the day, what matters to the taxpayer is the five point two-two-three percent on the total tax levy at the top. That's what hits the taxpayer. So I've talked about all of this and this is just sort of like a slimmery slide of the recommendation. And then we have, so how's it look in the county? Well, it's, it's, it's just as daunting elsewhere. This is live time from BAs about bu- uh, budgets that are being presented last night, tonight, last week. I think, I believe everything has to be adopted by tomorrow, submitted right by tomorrow, by the thirtieth. So this is, this is the numbers that districts around us are, Robbinsville's going right now. Um, five point four-seven in Ewing, four point five-six in Hamilton, four point one in Hopewell, seven point two-seven. In Princeton, they are collecting on their debt. So above their SGLA, they're also collecting debt for the referendum. Robbinsville at five point four-five and WWP at five point two-two-three. A big driver for all of us is healthcare. We're all getting hit in the healthcare area. And so is the state, and so is the state health plan, right? So this is, this, this story of healthcare is one that's driving cost. And remember, every district, because healthcare is so out of control, is generating the SGLA and healthcare. So then there, the boards are all choosing to apply that in order to make their budgets. And that's why you're seeing these numbers go up above two percent. So for the average assessed home, the tax impact is one point eight-four, uh, per hundred dollars of assessed. That's a twelve point two cents increase. So for the year, that's five hundred and thirty-eight dollar increase year over year for the average assessed home at four hundred and fifty-six. So the school taxes are estimated at eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. So we are seeing, uh, tax impact in Plainsboro of five thirty-eight. Now this, what I'm about to say is true for both Plainsboro and West Windsor, slightly different for each town, but both towns have lost tax appeals recently. Plainsboro reported to us it was over a hundred million in lost tax appeals. It was about seventy-four million or so from their, uh, audited budget the year before to the number that we were provided, uh, last week. Um, but that, that's driving about a hundred and, um, hundred and thirty dollars of that increase. And so that's in Plainsboro. West Windsor also had tax appeal losses around fifty-four million um, year over year in the total valuations of the net taxable value of the community. So that's driving about eighty-something dollars, eighty-four dollars, I believe, of, of cost in the increase for the average assessed home of three hundred and eighty-five dollars per year for, uh, an increase, total estimated tax increase on the average assessed home of five twenty-five at nine, nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. And again, that three eighty-five is on the year. If we were to subtract out the, the net taxable values, it would have been around four oh six and three oh one. But, uh, the reality is the assessed values are the assessed values and that's how the tax implications get determined. Now, that's based on what we were told. When those get audited and finalized, those numbers can be up or down. If those values go up, because new things come on the books before they close that out, that could decrease the impact. If those numbers get worse and the net taxable value of the community drops, that increase could be slightly higher. So the net taxable value has a significant impact on, on the, on the ultimate average, uh, assessment, uh, tax assessment for the year. And that's the last slide. So I'm happy to take questions from the Board of Education and then we'll close the public portion.
Thank you, Dr. Aderhold. Uh, questions from Dana?
I want to say thank you. Thank you to, um, Dr. Russo's team. Thank you to Dr. Aderhold and all the staff that puts all this together and for all the presentations and working that the board has done. Appreciate everything. It's a long, um, process and we all have a lot of input in it. So, um, I just wanted, I, you, you mentioned this, but I just wanted to clarify because, um, I'm not sure that, uh, everyone understands this. Um, so when you said that there, if the federal funds are not eliminated, like entirely or partly, where will the budgeted money to cover the, this possible shortfall go? So I know you said it's tax relief, but can you explain that a little bit more because, um, I'm not sure
Sure.
people really understand that.
Yeah. So, so as we build the two point two million and, and change into the budget, and that's a lot of change, right? Two point two million. Um, it's, it's being held in certain lines that budget managers won't have access to. So we can protect it from being spent. Um, and, and again, it's in the, essentially in the category is if the federal dollars either slow down and we have a cash flow issue and covering costs or if they get, we get into federal litigation. And that litigation could happen towards the district ourselves or it could happen at the state, most likely at the state level. That's the most likely path would be to target. It wouldn't make a lot of sense to target an individual district on one, you know, on, on three million dollars of federal aid when you go after a state. Um, and so like for Maine, the state of Maine, it's over trans, uh, youth athlete, uh, participation. And, and it being perceived to be a violation of the current administration's interpretation of Title VI. Or is it Title IX? Title IX, Title IX. Thank you from the audience. Right, for Title IX. Right? So, so it's, so in that case, the law's, the litigation is towards the, the state of Maine, the Department of Ed, State of Maine's Principals Association, which also oversees the Athletic Association. And there they're taking action where they're saying they're going to pause all federal funding for the state of Maine. Well, New Jersey has that exact same role and we have since Governor Christie. So if, if the feds wanted to make an issue out of that, they could just pick that one issue, right? So, so let's go back to then your question of like, what happens to that money? If that money is not necessary because we don't have any kind of action against New Jersey or action against WWP. The money would sit there. When the budget is concluded, the board would have the opportunity to look at budgeting it towards, um, tax relief for the subsequent year, meaning like asking, or it could go to fixed costs in next year's budget and eliminate those lines. And it could go, so if we needed four percent, let's say next year, and we generate an SGLA, it could be the two percent plus the one point two-five that's built in and then a smaller percentage. So the budget might be at two point seven next year and, and two point seven-five instead of, um, four. Because we could just take that money from lines that are held and could incorporate it into fixed costs. So those are budget decisions of board. And then that money, that two point two that would be on the balance sheet, the question is, do you do a one-time reduction, um, to help give back some tax relief? Or do you put it into reserve accounts that could then be used to offset the ability to collect money on debt? And that is, is a, is a way of tax relief because it's using collected monies, um, for monies you won't ask for additional tax authority on. So it offsets what you might ask for. So, um, at the end of the day, there'll be some decisions, but this could be a multi-year issue where that two point two just has to stay on a budgeted line in multiple years and gets to tax relief every year. And let's pray we don't have to spend it. I hope we don't have to spend it. If we have to spend it, it means bad things are happening in the state and we're still standing, but other districts are scrambling and services aren't being provided for students throughout the state of New Jersey. But we can still take care of the students in WWP, which at the end of the day is my responsibility. responsibility and your responsibility. So like, you know, like, I, I, I feel for my colleagues that can't make these moves. We've been a little bit ahead of this. We are the only district that's passed a statement on diversity, equity, inclusivity in the state of New Jersey. One of our other colleagues in Asbury Park, our colleagues in Asbury Park have passed something slightly similar, but specific to immigration. You know, we've taken a pretty bold stand in protecting our programs, but we've talked about budgeting our, our vision, budgeting our mission, and budgeting our goals, and that this budget does reflect that, as we're making sure that we stand for everything we say we're standing, and ensuring that the services we say we're going to provide continue.
All right. Thank you for the question and the answer. Any other questions? Lloy?
Thank you, Dr. Aderhold, for the presentation. I think along the same lines, if I'm looking at the slide with the, our neighbors and their increase across the county, do, do, are you aware if they include any sort of provision to, that's kind of equivalent to our 1.225 for any?
I'm unaware of any district taking a proactive stance to protect programs, or having the authority to do so with respect to having bank cap to be able to do that. So we're, we're in one way very fortunate in the way we've been financially positioned to be able to put some dollars into protect program, protect staff, and, and protect services for students. None of our colleagues here or across the state, I'm aware, have done that.
So the 3.99 for us to move from year to year in terms of just keeping everything as is?
Right. So our 5.223 overall that you see on there is incorporated. It would have been, if we didn't take the 1.225, it would have been 3.998, to your point. And we would have been the lowest in the county yet. You know, a higher number than in years past. The additional 1.225 is the money built into the authority through the SGLAs to protect services for students.
And then just another question about, I know you mentioned that the 1% to 2% left over after all the, the major players that really kind of go to what students and parents know about the district programs, sports, arts programs, things like that. I don't know if there's ever enough, but is there, are those things able to continue as is or improve? Because I know, you know...
So there's, there's no additional, like, stipends built in? There's no, like, all the contractual fixed costs for advisors and whatnot have continued? We're not reducing any of those programs. We're continuing all of our athletic programs. You know, and you look around the state and say, like, when you can't meet the fixed costs, what's happening out there? What's the story? When Freehold Regional, they're talking about almost a 13% increase. I didn't put that on the slide, because they're not in our county. In Middletown, they're talking about 10% plus increase. In Lacey, they're talking about elimination of all, all sports, all seasons, all sports. In, in Flemington, Raridan, you know, our neighbors over there, just front page this weekend, 65 teaching positions. Our friends in Boardentown, 56 positions? 50, 56 positions in Boardentown. So you start seeing, like, what happens when you have these gaps and you don't take, like, you don't take these fiscal actions, you obliterate your staffing, because that's where the majority of your money is tied up in people, people and benefits. So, you know, if every first-year teacher is approximately 65,000, and, you know, a blended healthcare rate, you know, for an average family plan now, it's over $45,000. You know, so when you talk about a single plan to a married, married, married spouse, to a, to a family, you're talking, let's just say, 30,000, 35,000 on average, when you had in prescription dental healthcare. So each teacher's 100 grand for step zero, right, on average, to budget in. So if you're eliminating 100 positions, is what Middletown's talking about doing, with a 10% increase, you know, you're talking over 100 teachers, and IAs, and support services, and secretaries, and, yeah, the handful of administrators. And so that's what's happening out there, like, in the field in real time. And it doesn't take long on NJ.com to just search through article after article to see the bloodshed that's happening in school districts all over New Jersey.
On that note, any other, any other questions, please?
Thank you again for this presentation, and it's still very important and very difficult to follow everything that's happening at the federal level. And it does require, I guess, the administration, the district, to follow everything so closely. So from the last presentation to this one, I guess the new pieces of information are regarding the assessed values between the two townships, if that's correct.
Yeah, we did not have the assessed values until the last two weeks, and we wait for that from the townships. We got West Windsor's yesterday afternoon. So, you know, we can't even calculate the impacts until yesterday.
Thank you. And so those assessed values could still potentially change. It's not set in stone yet.
Yeah, I don't have off the top of my head when they get finalized, and when they, for their audit period, for what that hits the community. Chris, do you happen to know, is there a finite time?
I mean, we don't expect it to shift much, but, but if you look back to what was in
our budget projection last year versus what was audited, there's slight, there's slight differences. The total was relatively similar, but there are slight differences between what we provide. Because what we share, even in this slide here, is based on what the townships provide us, like, in an email, in advance of the presentations, right? So, and then based on that estimation of where they believe it's going to be, when it gets finalized and audited with, with, you know, there's still things that they're waiting for at the county level, or potentially at a state appeal level, as that all gets finalized, they could also have some assessed values hit the tax rolls still, as things are opening in certain certificate. It doesn't hit the tax rolls when it's being built, but when the certificate of occupancy and the closing happens, right? So that, that also, there could be some finalization in those numbers as well, they could shift it slightly. So if it shifts the values up, it helps. If it shifts it lower, it doesn't help. It hurts the taxpayer, because it spreads the costs of all services, not just school taxes, but municipal increases or municipal costs, as well as county costs, across the pool.
Okay. And then that, for example, on this slide, school tech, the very last line, school taxes are estimated to be that value of the 8,000. So is that increased? Or I'm just trying to understand?
Yeah, that's increased by $538. So if that's the average assessed home within the township or property, right, home, town home, condo, home in the, in the proper, in the township of Plainsboro. So if someone's home is double that, their tax impact is double that, because they're, they're, they're well above the average home.
So are estimated to be 8K increase, or an increase of 8K?
Right, on, on the percentage, on the percentage that is the school tax.
The school tax total is 833. The increase year over year is 538, on the average home of $456,000. So if, if a home is a million dollars, that's going to be an increase of $1,076, and the tax would be twice that, would be $16,006.
Thank you for that clarification. I think folks are, you know, kind of trying to understand how this all translates to their actual, what they're actually going to face, so.
Understood. Thanks for the question.
Poochik, go ahead.
Thank you again for the presentation. Just going back on what you were saying in terms of new properties and coming up and potentially changing the assessed value. So you, I know you mentioned West Windsor specifically in terms of properties, upcoming properties in several locations. Do you know if there's upcoming properties in Plainsboro that would also change the assessed value?
No, I think, I think we have a little bit of a tale of two towns right now with respect to this. Plainsboro has properties that could potentially be built, but nothing that's under construction, right? Whereas West Windsor has active construction of over 1,500 units. Whether you go out by the Transit Village, or whether you go by the Low Center, or you will go right down by the mosque with the town's home, the town's property. So, you know, there's properties actively being constructed in West Windsor that are looking to come on. We're also in, in 2025, this is the year of affordable housing settlements, next round. So there's active discussions about the next responsibility for affordable housing. And I think the one to watch there is really in, in West Windsor, with some appeals and challenges that are going on with respect to the number, but that potentially could be hundreds to low 1,000, 1,200. So it all depends on what happens in their appeal process. I have a lot of faith in our municipal folks will work to try to bring that number down. But that being said, it still could be hundreds of units. So, you know, we're, we're in a position where West Windsor's adding residential units. We have gotten ahead of the growth with respect to the referendum. So as the numbers come, the question is, will we have the dollars to add the staff? Right? So, so staffing is still within our, that's outside of the referendum, right? We have to still find ways to budget increase staff as the population comes on. Now, one thing that I've said in prior presentations over years now is, tell me which homes are going to get which age kids, at which school impact, and you're a better predictor than I am. What I know is what we're seeing in the trends, and that is, it's harder to buy your starter home in WWP, right? So we're not seeing a lot of folks, when townhomes down the road are going for $900,000 plus, that's not a lot of folks moving in there with no children. They're coming in, they're not coming in and saying, you know, I want to have a baby in five years, so let me move in here. They're moving in with maybe one kid in school, and maybe one kid that's going into school. Or they might move in with kids in middle school, and they just want to get into the district. And maybe they're in a different place in their life financially, where they can move from one home to, one community to another. So we're starting to see the average age of our enrollment starting to go in upper, upper elementary into middle school. Like, sixth grade this year, we've gained over 100 kids from, from the beginning of the year to now, just in sixth grade, between CMS and GMS. That is not true in kindergarten, right? So our kindergarten numbers are still holding relatively low, whereas in years gone by, we would have always seen, remember, now we have full daycare, we used to have half daycare, we would have seen a 22% increase in first grade. We're not seeing those same increases in the last four years. Now, some of that's in, in the COVID through post-COVID environment, some of it's in our immigration policies, in the makeup of our community, some of it's in the ability to work virtually and not need to be near a train line. There's a lot of factors involved, but I do believe a lot of it is also, the starting point for our homes is, is a difficult price point to start out with as a young family. Chris, please.
You know, going back to the net taxable value discussion a second ago, I guess a cleaner way of saying that is, we get numbers from the townships. Plainsboro gets theirs to us right away. West Windsor's always gets it to us at the last second. There's always, because there's always challenges. I don't know what all the challenges are at the county level.
It's also Mercer County that's part of the problem.
So what happens is, and what we did today was, we took the abstract deratables. What happens is, each year, an abstract deratables is printed. That number is, can be slightly different, which it was in this case in both communities, than the number that we were given this time last year for the values of the communities. So that's where there can be a small variation in the actual value of the community, which I believe by June 1 is in stone for July tax bill, et cetera. So that is that variance that may or may not occur. But so it's from, when, when Dr. Aderhold says an audited number, that's the abstract deratables that's handed out in like December for the year completed, so.
Appreciate that. Lloy, you have another question?
Sorry, just one more question. I just remembered. I know that the budget presented in front of us, that the, the healthcare SGLA from the past two years and this year are all being used. So for next year, is that going to hurt us a bit for, like, having a bit of, of the bank cap, just to kind of build in for next?
Yeah, like, as things stand today, we would have the 2% available to us, and allowances being zero allowances. That being said, in every fiscal year, you can generate an SGLA based on healthcare. So some years, it's a smaller build or smaller allocation than others. So everything's dependent upon the differential between the state health insurance and the state's plan, and the costs versus some of your fixed costs. And there's a whole formula in the 2%, right? And so there's a whole formula in that about what you can generate. That is when the formulas open up, and we plug everything in, we find out what we're, our tax are available SGLA is. We will have to make a decision on the money that we have baked in for protecting the district. And look, we're going to know a lot more around what's happening with the state of public education, federal funding, over the course of the 25 calendar year, and let alone into 20, the beginning of '26, with some of the challenges and some of the way this is going to play out relatively quickly. If we're seeing it to be favorable for school districts across the nation, and things settle out, and things, sort of the heat comes down, we could look at that 1.225 and put it into fixed costs, and then play the SGLA dollars. And we've looked at SGLAs in multi-years. But we also sort of look at federal funding on fire right now, and the real threat to public education today, and wanting to be able to maintain programs and protect our students' best interests today. So you can also look at it as sort of taking a, a calculated risk of collecting a little more upfront that could go into fixed costs in a year from now. So, you know, we're, we're sort of looking ahead, saying, and remember, as we're putting this budget together, this is February into March, and some of the things that we said could happen in February and March are happening in live time right now. So we haven't been radically wrong in the, in what's happening at the federal level with the litigation and the threats and where we're at. We've actually been right on point with what's happened. So, you know, as, I don't want to be right about, you know, what's happening in, potentially in a governor's election, but you can see it play itself out, just watching what's happening in the conversations that's, that's happening. And we're pretty tuned in, in our, in some of our advocacy roles in associations outside of WWP.
Appreciate it. Dana, you have a question?
One more follow-up. Getting back to the assessed, the assessed values going lower, do we know why they are lower? I think we heard that in the previous meeting.
Yeah, so what can happen in, 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 you, you, a property owner can, can appeal to the tax assessor if they feel that they're paying more in taxes than their property is worth. The tax assessor then makes the determination to either uphold the taxes or to make an adjustment. If they uphold and you want to challenge, you go to court. And in this particular situation, in several major cases, for some of the larger complexes that are in our communities that have large footprints, but maybe are sitting with lower rental right now than maybe five years ago, they prevailed in getting tax savings and tax adjustments in the tune of over 74 million in, in Plainsboro and about 45 million to 54 million in West Windsor. So we were given numbers of 45 and 100. So if, but if you look at the, the, the abstract values, it's actually 74 and 54. So, but either way, it all has to do with like, and I'm not, I, we weren't told which properties, but you can look over there and say, like, which buildings are sitting 70% empty, right? Because they're, put their workers virtual, right? And they don't need the office spaces anymore. So now they're, they're, these owners are sitting with properties that have names of companies on them, but no company in there, right? Those kind of properties are questioning. They didn't lose 74 million in valuation because the local homeowner challenged, you know, you know, it would take a lot of homeowners to win that. We're talking about major property owners and major rental properties that are sitting vacant.
Thank you. Go ahead, Liz.
Just a quick question, too. We've been talking about the 1.225 as possibly, the 1, the 1.225 is possibly if we don't spend it. What if, do we have that option with the 1.998? Or that has to be set?
No. No, the 2% plus the 1.998 is to cover fixed costs. The 3.998 built in is your fixed cost, budget to budget, to maintain your programs. The additional 1.225 is the, is, is a step to make sure that we're protecting the district around all the work that we're doing on federal grants. And remember, if you go back to that eight, March 18th meeting, and the statement on diversity, equity, inclusivity, I mean, what's at risk is everything we value, the whole line of, it's not what we do, it's who we are. It's all of our programs that support our students across a multitude of topics around diversity, equity, inclusi- diversity, equity, inclusivity, around, you know, our gender neutral bathrooms, around the, the stance that we've taken and the state has taken for our trans youth athletes and protecting student privacy and, you know, and our hiring practices and our instructional programs and the diversification of texts and, you know, you name it, there's, there's literally hundreds of things that we could point to because the state, the federal government has not defined what they mean by indoctrination of DEI practices.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the very comprehensive presentation and lots to, lots to mull over and think about.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now that takes us to our opportunity for public comments on the budget. The board invites thoughts and reactions on the 2025-2026 budget from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes. Any comments on the budget? Yes.
Debbie Baer, a teacher in the district and a 1982 graduate of the district. And I'm really here to say, it makes me so proud to hear that we are still striving for excellence in all the areas and our budget reflects that. It, it just so happens that my mother was on the school board when the high school opened. And one of the things they talked about during that time period of what kind of high school are we going to build and what does this mean for our community? It was all the things you're talking about now. It was the topical things of the day, of course. Actually, there was some discussion about homosexuality in the high school. Quite a few of my friends were gay. And it was something just that was part of our school. And we know for, I'm here at enough of these meetings to know that the things that matter most to the kids when they make their reports are all the extracurricular. We never hear how great LA2 was, but we do hear what's happening at the dance and what club is doing this and how the swim team did and who's dancing and all of that. So I think preserving all of those things is a priority here. It has been from the beginning. And I want you to know that you are carrying on the long tradition of when the district became a K-12, that was what they were talking about then too. It's why we have a very interesting looking high school south, because they were innovative and they wanted to try new things and they thought kids all working together on projects is a great way to learn. And so they laid out a high school that looked like that and took a lot of grief for it, because people were like, what are you building them all? But they went ahead, they got advice, and they wanted to be the best in the, in the state, and we still are. Someone texted me this morning, congratulations. I was like, on what? Our two high schools are the top, in the top 10 for SAT scores in the state. So we've grown tremendously. I think there were four schools when I started. There are 10, they are full and bigger, and we're still doing a great job. So I really, really commend, it was a long presentation on the budget, but it was thorough and it really does show the values. And they were the values when we started and I so appreciate, my mother's been gone a long time, but you are carrying on what was valuable then too. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that perspective. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public comment period. And we can move to vote on approving the 2025-2026 budget. Can I get a motion to approve items number, items 1, 2, 3 of the budget? Louisa and Robin? Any other questions? I think we're good with questions.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Zovich.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Grug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. McKeown.
Yes. So this adjourns our public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget. And that means we can move on to our regularly scheduled program. I, I just wanted to quickly mention that this past Sunday, a few of us board members were fortunate enough to accept and thank the Plainsboro Democratic Organization at the Plainsboro Mayor's Branch for the, the Peter A. Cantu Scholarship Fund for a student starting next year, resident of Plainsboro from either one of the high schools who has an interest or is interested in pursuing public service. As I said, on Sunday, it is more than financial support. It is a message to our students that their dreams, their hard work, and their desire to give back to their community matters. And do you have any other comments?
I'll pass.
I think that's a good idea for now. So that takes us to our first opportunity for public comments. The board invites thoughts and reactions on agenda items and items of concern from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes. Any public comments? Go for it.
Good evening. Daniel Weiss, 15 Canoe Brook Drive in West Windsor, councilman here in West Windsor and liaison to the school board. Welcome back from spring break, right? It feels, it's only been a week, but it feels like a long time ago. I usually, I haven't gone on a spring break event in a while, but this year I attended, for my spring break, I attended the, the first international robotics competition in Houston, Texas. FIRST, which is an acronym, which stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, is a global nonprofit that empowers young people through hands-on STEM experiences. It was founded in 1989 by the inventor Dean Kamen. FIRST provides robotics programs for students from kindergarten through high school, fostering innovation, teamwork, and problem-solving skills. With a mission to prepare students for the future, FIRST competitions challenge teams to design, build, and program robots while promoting values like gracious professionalism, collaboration, and community participation. And by engaging with mentors and industry professionals and peers, the participants gain real-world skills that inspire careers in STEM and beyond. And the reason that I'm talking about this is that West Windsor didn't have one, but actually two teams representing our community, West Windsor, Plainsboro, I should say, two teams representing us in two different leagues. The team Don't Blink is a community FTC team, supported by the Princeton STEM Academy, and the Midnight Inventors is a WWP school district-supported FRC team. And to give you an idea of the enormity of achieving a spot to compete in the world championships, there are 9,000 FTC teams worldwide and only 2% are invited to the FTC World Championships. So congratulations to all the students who participated and a special congratulations to the Don't Blink team, who earned the prestigious Inspire Award, which is a top judged, judged award given to the team that best embodies the first tech challenge. But came back from that and immediately jumped into a meeting with High School South Spectrum Group, which is the GSA affinity group here. We spoke about the various protections in New Jersey that has, that New Jersey has in place for the LGBTQ+ community. And they, along with, with all the Spectrum teams across the district, have been invited to participate in the Robbinsville Pride Event. Robbinsville has been holding Pride events every, every five years, for five years now. And this year, they're trying to do, their theme is Five Towns in Five Years. So they're including all their neighboring towns, and that's West Windsor, East Windsor, Allentown, and Hamilton. And so trying to collaborate with all these teams to, to, to work with us. Can I have one more minute?
Oh, sorry, Dan.
You'll have to come back for the second opportunity.
All right, I'll do that.
All right, cool. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that seeing done, I will close this public opportunity for comments. And at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to move an agenda item out of order, specifically personnel. Dana and Loy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so for. Okay. Do you want me to go first or do you want to go first? Okay. All right, so for personnel, item number one plus the green addendum, can I get a motion to approve it? Schwetta and Liz? Any questions? Comments? Nope? Is it all the? Oh. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Sure. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll start with Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Grug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Zovich.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. McKeown.
Yes.
All right. So I just want to draw attention for the public to two individuals that are here in the audience with us that were just appointed by the Board of Education this evening. This evening, we have a position of Assistant Superintendent of Pupil Services and Planning. I'm pleased with the recommendation and now the appointment of Ms. Jessica Cincotta, our, as our next Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Services and Planning. Ms. Cincotta is the current principal of High School South, where she spent the last four years and was the point person on the construction and post-COVID and all tremendous work over there at South. Prior to that, Jessica was the High School North Assistant Principal for four years. Prior to that, Jessica was Assistant Principal in Lawrence. And she's also served as an administrator in multiple settings over the past 17 years. Before that, she was a music teacher in Illinois, Paraguay, and Bolivia. So we're thrilled to have Jessica join our central office team and we welcome her in July as she finishes out her school year at High School South so she can end this year with her students and then join us up here for all the joys of central office, as you witnessed tonight. You're doing, you're doing next year's presentation. And then I'm also pleased this evening to introduce our new Assistant Principal at High School North, joining us in the audience with Mr. Thomas and now Dr. Singh. Happy to be her dissertation advisor and preside over that in the last month. Pleased to introduce Rosalyn Bartholomew as the new Assistant Principal to join Lamont and Sonya at High School North. Rosalyn comes to us from Hillside High School, where she served as the Assistant Principal for the past two years. But prior to that, she was a 24-year social studies teacher, also at Hillside High School, and we're thrilled to have her join us here in WWP in the upcoming, in the upcoming months, and we're hoping in July. So congratulations to both of you. We look forward to you both joining the team and joining in new capacities, and we look forward to your service. So thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. And before we move on, we do also want to acknowledge a few retirements at our district. The first is Laura Agnella. She's our Teacher Resource Specialist for Technology across Town Center, Wykoff, Millstone River, Millstone River Village, Maurice Hawk, and Dutch Neck. She is retiring after 26 years of service to WWP. Then we have Maura Jean Healy, who is our Wykoff School Nurse, who's retiring after 29 years in service to the district. And last but not least, we have Nancy Masari, our Maurice Hawk Health and Physical Education Teacher, who is retiring after 40 and a half years at WWP. So we wish you all well, lots of health, good luck, new adventures, and we thank you very much for all your years of dedication and service to the district. Now, we can go back to our Board of Education Committee reports. So I'll ask Dana for our first report on administration and facilities.
Okay, good evening. The A&amp;F Committee met on Tuesday, April 22nd, and we reviewed several policies and we recommend them for a second reading and approval at tonight's meeting. They are Policy 5512, harassment, intimidation, bullying; Policy 9163, which is spectator code of conduct for inter-scholastic events; and Policy 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. We were also given an athletics update. Spring sports are in full swing and our student athletes are, are doing well. At High School North, the girls' lacrosse team had a thrilling victory over Robbinsville. The boys' tennis, tennis team has been nearly unstoppable, only losing one match thus far, and the boys' golf team is off to an incredible 6-1 start. Over at High School South, the tennis team is currently undefeated and gearing up to play in the CVC tournament. I don't know if that already happened, but. A job built on also to our junior softball player, Deanna Hu, for achieving her 100th career hit, and to Alex Siegel, who, Alex Siegel, who earned his 200th career point in, in boys' lacrosse. And a huge congratulations to, is it Shai? Shiley? Shiley Holden, who has been selected to receive the NJSIAA Scholar-Athlete Award and is also the proud recipient of the George O'Gorman Memorial Scholarship, which is awarded by the CVC basketball coaches. So congrats to all of our sports teams and the individuals who have achieved these special recognitions.
All right, thanks Dana. Any questions for administration and facilities? Nope. Okay, so I'll ask Loy for curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, Graylin. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on April 22nd. We began with a discussion on middle school electives. Supervisors Jeff Santoro and Russell Ray provided the committee with a detailed update to the challenge, to the changes in elective and cycle offerings at the middle schools. Next on the agenda are items to be voted on tonight. First, remote instruction plan. The Curriculum Committee recommends approval of submission of the 2025-26 WWP RSD Remote Learning Plan. Second, professional development. The committee recommends approval of two professional development. The first is two teachers to participate in a one-week science summer institute on July 21st through the 25th of this year, this year, at Raritan Valley Community College at a total cost not to exceed $800 plus travel. And the next professional development, 10 district teachers to attend virtually a three-day responsive classroom elementary advanced course, June 16th through the 18th, at a total cost of $8,700, and that would be paid through Title IV grant funds. Next is field trips. We recommend approval for the middle school and high school future problem solvers to the Future Problem Solvers International Conference in, at the University of Indiana from June 4th through June 8th. The cost of the trip is approximately $1,700 per student. Next, for travel approval, committee recommends approval for two advisors to accompany the middle school and high school students to the Future Problem Solvers International Competition that I just mentioned. And the cost of that trip is not to exceed $1,700 per teacher, including travel. And then the other travel approval is for 10 multilingual learner teachers to attend the NJ, TOSL and NJBE Spring Conference, New Brunswick, on May 20th through the 22nd. Total cost of the trip not to exceed $4,400, and that will be paid through contractual funds and Title III grant funds. The committee will next meet on May 20th.
Thanks, Loy. Any questions for curriculum? Nope. Okay, so I'll ask Louisa for our finance committee.
Great. The finance committee also met on April 22nd. The committee reviewed agenda items, including the monthly financial reports. The administration affirmed that no major accounts are over expended and that sufficient funds are available to complete the year. The committee reviewed the following motions on the agenda for approval. Approve the submittal of a grant application to the NJSI group. Approve the Assistant Superintendent for Finance to issue an RFP using a competitive contracting process for staff professional development and the Orton-Gillingham approach to reading and spelling instruction. To approve the renewal of current copier leases district-wide. To approve cooperative purchases over the bid limit for technology infrastructure. To approve several technology agreements for software licenses. Approve the disposal of obsolete equipment. Approve transportation jointure agreements with other educational entities. Approval of evacuation drills and quoted routes, and approve staff professional development travel and expenses. Next, the committee discussed the budget. The budget was approved by the County Office of Education on April 8th, 2025. A public hearing on the budget is scheduled for April 29th. The committee reviewed and discussed the most current budget information. Next, the committee discussed ESIP II. The first construction meeting for the power purchase agreement was held last Wednesday due to the extended. Due to the extended delay in contract negotiations, several logistical concerns have arisen regarding construction staging. As work must now be completed during the school year, large portions of the parking lots will need to be sectioned off to facilitate construction activities, such as installing the carports with solar panels in the parking lots. Regarding the custodial RFP, five responses were received for the recently issued custodial services request for proposals. The administration evaluated the submissions using the rubic outlined in the RFP. Based on the scoring, three companies have been invited to participate in an in-person interview with their leadership teams. Staff reported on cafeteria operations. Meal service trends have remained consistent throughout the year. Compared to the same month last year, the number of breakfasts served has increased while the number of lunches has decreased. The paid lunch equity tool will be used will need to be used shortly to calculate the required lunch pricing for the 25-26 school year. Other service metrics have remained steady, including a 39% increase in meals served to students qualifying for free, reduced, and NJ-income eligible programs. Additionally, 81% of all breakfasts served were provided to qualifying students. In March, Southwest Food Service Excellence successfully hired three new staff members. However, four vacancies remain. For transportation, the committee discussed the cancellation of a previously quoted route and the acceptance of quotes for newly quoted to-and-from-home routes, as well as several activity routes. The committee also reviewed the bus evacuation drills conducted during the month of April. The committee will next meet on Tuesday, May 20.
Thanks, Louisa. Any questions for finance? Go ahead, Loy.
Chris, I was just wondering for the construction of the carports, for which particular schools? And is that going to impact, like, parking at events during the school year? Because I'm just reading that says during the school year that it'll be impacted. I don't know if you know the answer or not, but just curious.
I thought you were going to ask me about the price equity tool, is what I thought you were going to ask me about. If, you know, if the same thing Flo uses. But the schools, High School North parking lot in front of the stadium, Community Middle School on the side facing it on the left, High School South, the main parking lot. There are the schools that I'm thinking around if I'm missing anything. There's, oh, and then Millstone River in the back. There's two parking lots in the back between the schools. So each of those lots will be impacted. I'll be putting together, matter of fact, I have a meeting tomorrow with the PPA Company and Schneider Electric and Cop Electric, who's the subcontractor for Green Skies, PPA Company. And then I'll be reaching out to the principals and reaching out to Dr. Adahold and try to put meetings together where we can kind of schedule what can happen where. Yep, cool.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, next is our voting portion of our meeting. Can I get a motion for administration items numbers 1 through 4? Dana and Liz? Any questions?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Zovich.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. McKeown.
Yes. And can I get a motion for curriculum and instruction items numbers 1 through 3? Loy and Pooja? Any questions?
Okay, 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 we'll start we'll start with Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw. Ms. Zovich.
Yes.
Ms. McKeown.
Yes. And can I get a motion for finance items numbers 1 through 18, plus the blue addendum? Louisa and Robin? Any questions?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Zovich.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Ms. McKeown.
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from March 18 and April 8? Ajanta and Loy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any abstentions? None. Do we have any board liaison reports? Go ahead, Pooja.
Last Wednesday, April 23, I had the pleasure of attending DLI Spanish Night, the first DLI Spanish Night, and hopefully this will be an annual tradition. I had the pleasure of watching the DLI students from kindergarten through sixth grade dance, sing, act. They were MCs, they were backflips, they were splits. It was amazing. I know all the DLI families in attendance really enjoyed it. It was a very memorable experience. Thank you to Ashley Warren and to all the DLI teachers for all of their time and energy in putting together these performances. It was really a wonderful night.
Pooja, that's really nice to hear. Do you have any other liaison reports? Go ahead, Liz.
Just wanted to, sorry, just wanted to mention that the Sasa organization, student-run organization of High School South, had their annual event, and I know North also had a similar Sasa event very recently, and both programs were very well attended, and the performances were amazing, and there was a lot of contributions and participation, both by faculty, staff members, as well as the school community, the students and all. So it was an engaging and exciting event for both schools.
That's really nice. Thanks, Liz. Anybody else? All right, since we're adding staff, I'm going to do one more. Monday, or I guess that was yesterday, there was a webinar hosted by Jessica Smedley for Nurturing Healthy Minds webinar. I believe the recording will be on the district website, so I really encourage everyone to go and view it. Really, really powerful, good messages out there that I think will be very helpful to everybody, especially in times like these. So any other reports?
Nope.
Okay, so any new business?
Nope.
Okay. This takes us to our second opportunity for public comments. The board invites comments from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. And I know Dan was waiting to add one more minute from the first comment, so go for it.
Thank you for indulging me. Dan Weiss, 15 Canoe Brook Drive, West Windsor. So I just want to sort of finish and sort of tie everything together, why I came to speak today. And interestingly, someone was talking about all the wonderful extracurricular activities that we like to talk about and the students like to promote. But today I did something a little different. Today, I met with a group of students at High School South who are taking a social science elective focused on housing, transportation, and community design. They are working in groups on a capstone project on issues such as the crisis of waste. So how do we get to zero waste in West Windsor and Plainsboro? Or the crisis of isolation and aging? How do we foster community and the social supports that come with it? The crisis of education? What kind of school and campus do we want to build for the future? And the crisis of commerce, which was about how do we re-energize local entrepreneurship with face-to-face interactions? And so I spoke to the class about affordable housing here in West Windsor, which is kind of a hot topic today, and we quickly dove into a broad Q&amp;A about all the projects that they're working on. It's really incredibly impressive, the depth of understanding that these students have about real-world issues and their passion to sort of roll up their sleeves and to problem solve. And I've committed to follow up with each of their teams on their individual projects. So kudos to their teacher, Brian Levinson, for providing a space for these students to engage with our community. And quite frankly, as a councilman, I wish we would see this kind of engagement from our adult members of our community. But it does give me hope that our students are right there with us and are paying attention to what's going on in our world and our and our community here. And so tying it all together, you know that this school district is incredibly special, and it gets awards, but sometimes you don't get enough credit for the work that you do and the commitments that you make and the hard decisions that you have to make. This budget process was was quite challenging, right? Very different for you compared to previous years. So kudos to you for all you do to allow the students to grow and build, build their community here. It really means a lot to me and to our whole community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close out? Okay, I'm going to close this public comment period, and we'll need to recess and to close the executive session. So let me read. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act authorizes boards of education to meet in an executive session under certain circumstances, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting to go into private session, now therefore be it further resolved by the West Windsor-Plainsboro Regional School District Board of Education that it is necessary to meet an executive session to discuss certain items involving a student matter, as well as the superintendent evaluation process and timelines. Be it further resolved that any discussion held by the board, which need not remain confidential, will be made public as soon as feasible. The minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Be it further resolved that the board will not return to open session to conduct business at the conclusion of the executive session. Now can I get a motion to adjourn to closed session? Louisa and Robin? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and good night.